Okay, thank you for the roll call. Can we have approval of the agenda? I'd like to have a motion and approval.
I approve that we approve the agenda.
Say it.
And probably move the second roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Ochowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Salin?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Antrim?
She will be coming later. Okay. Public comments on agenda items only. Are there any public comments on the agenda items only? Hearing on, I would like to have approval of the minutes, motion and approval.
The move?
Okay.
And probably move the second roll call.
Commissioner Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks? Commissioner Ochowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Salin?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Antrim?
Okay. New business. We have approval of the 10 project-based vouchers for Newton Senior Living.
Okay, this, um, just, we're just asking the board to approve an additional 10 PBVs for Newton. It's one of our items in development. We're trying to improve, uh, we've left there. And that's going forward to allow us to add an additional vouchers there.
Does anybody have any questions or anything regarding that? Hearing, if there is no questions or additional information that needs to be provided.
I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah, we're asking the board to approve 10 additional project-based vouchers for Newton Senior Living. It's one of our out-of-county developments.
Hearing that, no more comments about that. Entertaining motion for approval.
So who?
Second.
Then probably move the second roll call, please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Ochowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Salin?
Yes.
Very much. Okay. Ready for our operations report?
All right. Well, we had a pretty short, um, meeting hopefully today. I want to start by recognizing our April Employee of the Month, which is Curtis Love. And I'm Assistant Supervisor Mr. Dwayne Watson. Come up and tell us a little bit about Curtis and why he's selected.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mr. Watson, uh, maintenance supervisor. And I'm Lil' Buddy. I think so and so. I would like to present this award to a really good, hard worker. Really good friend. I really like him, we like him. Okay. I would like to present this award to him. Do I give to him? I would like to present you with this award on behalf of Champagne or Champion of the Month, Curtis Love.
Don't sit down yet.
Appreciate everybody that's supporting me. All the maintenance staff, everybody at the office. That's it.
We're getting the humans turned over. And so we have a goal to get these humans turned over and they stack up quickly, so.
Also, I would like to say something about Dwayne. Dwayne ain't even giving an award, but I think you need to have one. Because I've been watching you for a while doing.
All right, thank you, man. Just working with them is the enough award.
And I don't know, we, uh, said this to the board last month, but Dwayne Watson was our new maintenance supervisor. So he was promoted.
Oh, Dwayne is?
So we recognize this one.
I always, I also want to echo the same thing. Uh, I know Mr. Dwayne from many years back. And I was going down, I think it was Randolph the other day. And I wanted to stop you on the riding horse. But I just wanted to, you know, let you know that the board really enjoyed, uh, really, uh, appreciates all the diligent work that you do and have done over the years. And we're happy to see you in a position and keep, keep up the good work. You got a great team and, and maintenance is, is one of the, all departments are very, very important. But that, your department is very, very, very critical to the success and the needs and, and all of the other attributes that, that the residents need. And also from an appearance from outside, you know, other eyes around looking at our property and the way that, that, uh, the appearance is impeccable. And appreciate that your team can keep, keep that going.
Thank you for having me.
And then next up, we have our Youth Bill faculty month. Erica Redd was selected as Student of the Month. Erica is actually also has been selected for an internship at Housing Authority. Um, and so no youth bill staff is here to present, uh, to say a few words about her because they are, um, most of them are in Atlanta right now for training for the youth bill. Um, so the staff is out and the students are out as well. So Erica is a great, a great person and a great, uh, youth bill member. And we're happy to have her on, on board of the Housing Authority's intern. So we'll have her started in the, in the next couple of weeks. So the board will get to meet her in person. All right, some activities and updates. Um, next slide. We have included our Deputy Director search and we have selected Jennifer Ferguson as our, our next Deputy Director. And so she will start on May 3rd and then, um, she, she'll be at that, uh, our May Board meeting. So the board will get to meet her there. And then we'll try to set up some meetings for other people in the community who is up to meet her, so.
Is she from here?
She is not from here. She's from Illinois. Uh, some exciting news. We were, um, we were notified that we have received the Foster Youth, uh, Independence Grant, or not grant, but the, the additional vouchers. So we're receiving about seventy-two thousand dollars in funding for that. And this is for youth who are aging out of foster care, um, and to, you know, stabilize in the housing. And so, uh, we have 10 vouchers and I think we just said something we can do, was it 25 each year. We're really excited to get that started.
So when should those youths apply? Like, if they're like?
I put a, um, we have like a, um, a little flyer that is to include all the boards. That's the little flyer.
So will they be gone by next year or can they get applied next year?
They're, they're taking off first if you see a fast break second. Yes, yes.
Okay. The reason I say that, because I have a youth that's gonna be, she's supposed to be going to the Army, but she's been taking that test many times and she has not passed it yet. Hallelujah. So if we don't do that, we need a second opportunity, maybe she might be going to school here. But we want the Army first. Hallelujah. Yeah.
Okay, and then, uh, next we have, um, I wanted to highlight some of the program that LSS has, um, been working, LSS, not NTW Department, has been working on, Mary's Little Liberty. It's a small business opportunity program. And they actually have a workshop coming up on May 30th. Um, but some of the businesses that have stemmed from this small business opportunity program are Mama Do School Truck. So if you guys want to tell the board and the public that we'll be watching. So we get our residents, um, so we get our, our resident-owned businesses supported in the community. So Mama Do School Truck, Tip Top Landscaping, Smack Buds LLC, a catering food truck business, um, Build a Batty Body Sculpting and HQS Inspection Services. So we have, you know, a few new, um, a few new resident-owned businesses. The HSCC has helped us start through our NTW funding. So that's really exciting. And we want to just keep promoting this program and getting out in the community so we can get more of our, our residents to seek entrepreneurship. Um, so upcoming events, so we have a stress awareness and self-care workshop. That'll be on June 9th and it's in partnership with the University of Illinois School of Social Work. And then, um, we are also doing free professional headshot on May 12th. Um, so the, uh, our intern corps has organized this. And so this will be another, another opportunity for clients, um, and, and staff and the general community to come get a free professional headshot for, um, to just help build up their career portfolios. Okay, we have a new admin plan that is coming out, um, pretty soon. So we're converting over to the Dan McKay version of the admin plan. Um, so it's a little bit more detailed and it cites regulations a little better than what we have. And it'll, and we're also trying to get our admin plan in better alignment with our NTW plan. And so, um, we'll be sending it out, um, to the board in May to review. So we'll likely get it posted in May and then ask the board to approve in June. So I just asked that the board will go through, when we do send that document out, it's, it's a lot of pages. I think about eight hundred pages. It feels like eight hundred pages, so it's a lot of pages. So we just asked that you take some time to review that. We'll have about a month or so to just take some time to review. And if there's any questions that, you know, we can answer ahead of the board meeting, please send it up ahead of the board meeting so we can get the answers to your questions. Then we have, we held an all-staff meeting on April 6th. Um, and so since it's Fair Housing Month, we did have Chad Hoffman from Habitat for Humanity come in to give a presentation of their housing. So the staff really enjoyed that and learned a lot about the history and the brand line and how, um, how minority families didn't have as many homeownership opportunities. And so I think it was a really informative meeting. And we also got to vote for some of the changes that will be happening this year. We went over quarterly homes and, um, just setting plans for quarter two. And our lunch with Peter from Woodhogs. And then there's some pictures on the next slide. And then this one was really exciting. We got to present at the Champagne County Association of Realtors on April 20th. So I gave the presentation and I brought along two youth bill students to co-present with me. And they did a really good job. I was so proud of them. And they were like really the stars of the show. Everybody came up afterward and wanted to talk to them about their experience in youth bill. And so they put together slides and they did a really great job. And then Martina Hardy also presented, uh, with me. She's our Youth Bill Program Assistant.
Can we get a comment from Commissioner?
Uh, it was an outstanding presentation. It was very well done, very well received. We, we have 550 Realtors in Champagne County. And I'm going to tell you what, that there's only about, uh, 20 of them that understand what the Housing Authority does. It's a very small minority of people. And, and it's so important that they understand the role of this, of Lily and, and of the staff. And this was a great step towards educating several of them, several of the leaders of the organization. Really well done.
I'd like to thank you for giving the, giving them an opportunity, that exposure and, uh...
All I did was text Sully and say, "Do I come?"
Well, that was okay. Somebody had to be behind that text. Thank you.
While you guys are saying that, I'm just thinking about something. I was in the city. There was some younger kids there and some of them own houses at age 20. So I don't know if they're really promoting that with the younger crowd, how to, uh, pay for your life insurance at a young age and be done with it in 20 years and start to buy your own home at a young age and be able to pay for it by a certain time. I, I can hear a lot of people promoting that, with younger children.
Yeah, I, I, I haven't either, so that's...
Hallelujah. And I was just amazed how some young people own their own home, have their own businesses. Yeah, in the city.
I was so impressed by these two young men who came from New York. I, I think they're both 16 right now.
Mm-hmm, 16 and 17.
And they carried themselves like they were 20-somethings, 30-somethings. But you could see that they were dressed very professionally. And, uh, that they, they were, they were in corners talking to our members all over the place for prior meeting and after meeting. They were really, they were, I, I was overwhelmed by how remarkable these two members.
They are great. They are, they are great. We're very proud of them. And then, um, yeah, I definitely saw them networking a lot. Every time I turn around, they were talking to somebody. I'm like, man, you guys are better than me at networking. So that was a really, a really great opportunity. And then what's also good is what stemmed from it. We've gotten a lot of calls from Realtors or people who own property, um, that attended that, uh, presentation and are asking about bringing their properties on the voucher program. And so it's definitely, it definitely has helped us with some landlord engagements. So it was a great opportunity to go and, and present on the work we do.
I was at a, another conference yesterday. That was a Realtor conference and we had somebody who was an instructor. Um, and he is actually from New York, teaching, training, teaching and training some Realtors, some people like me who do teach real estate in the market. And his comment, he, he started talking about the voucher program and how much he endorses the voucher program. And he said point blank, he said, "This is the best thing that ever happened to me as a landlord." And here he is saying that to a bunch of, a bunch of Realtors and it was kind of, you know, it was a great investment, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Whatever education we get is only, was only moving the needle forward.
Good, very good. Um, we have some updates on the Oakwood Trace Site Lighting Project. So they have gotten some trenching and installation of the underground electrical conduit. Um, so wire has been done on the north side of the property. And so we're getting there with Oakwood Trace. Um, the goal, what, what did he say, May 16th? Uh, May 16th for completion. They can have the, uh, site lighting completed and, uh, cameras, uh, up as well. So we're hoping that to get this done before the weather breaks and, uh, before things get too rough over at Oakwood Trace. So we're going to try to get some of this cleaned up. And I just also like to say, I'm really proud of the team for, for bringing this. We've been talking about upgrading the lights and the cameras at Oakwood Trace since I started that housing building five years ago. And so I'm really proud of our team for really getting this to the finish line, so kudos to them. All right, then we have some updates about the Invision Center. We're almost done. Where youth bill is all this out. Um, so probably about another two or three weeks there. Um, and so they got to hang the ceilings, but the paint, the drywall is up, the paint and that. And they got to do flooring next.
Flooring and acrylic ceiling, yeah. Yeah. The, um, toilet is bad and stuff.
So almost there with that. And then also, youth bill will be moving on the next slide. Youth bill is, uh, has a grant from the City of Urbana to do, uh, to start a pilot program there in Urbana. And so we have leased the spaces at 111 North Broadway. And, um, it'll be, uh, the youth bill staff is planning to do a grant opening there. Um, so they're going to be doing some advertising in Urbana. And we have an anticipated start date of the program for June of 2023. Um, we've hired an education coordinator who starts next week, I believe. Um, that, that will work permanently at that site in Urbana. And we also, um, are going to put Joby out there for the crew. And so, um, we're really excited about that opportunity to take youth bill to Urbana. The students will still do, um, they'll still do training, their construction training here in Champagne. Um, but they'll do the education portion and the career development and all of that out in Urbana. Because Pioneer is going to be the training center, so we have all of that set up. Um, so the grant from Urbana is $350,000 over 18 months. And so we're confident that we'll be successful at it and we hope to be successful, so.
I live in the band, we need it. Hallelujah.
And we'll also be doing a renovation in Urbana. So that, the, um, youth bill is working with Habitat for Humanity and that project is, um, located in Urbana. So they'll be doing a deal with Habitat. And it'll be, um, the first ground-up construction for, for us, so.
Which started next week.
So us excited.
Well overdue.
First ground up. So Habitat is excited to have them and then we're excited to be there as well.
I think that's a real, uh, great opportunity. There's more opportunities you have to get the youth involved and, you know, get them to steer the right direction, guidance, proper guidance, I think is a real plus. There's some other agencies out there and organizations that's, uh, you know, doing some other things and, and good things. And you just can't have enough, so for us to be able to have another opportunity to send in, uh, that outreach is a very positive thing for communities in Urbana. So that's a kudos.
All right, new guys, some updates for youth bills, some additional updates. So they have, um, uh, youth bill staff attended the peer-to-peer conference. And so it was something that was kind of semi-required by, uh, youth bill, um, the Department of Labor. Um, they asked us to, uh, make some funding, uh, make some budget modifications to get our, our people to go to the, the peer-to-peer conferences. So half the youth bill staff went to Dallas and the other half is in Atlanta right now. Um, so those are some pictures of them there. Um, so they got an opportunity to learn from other, um, the coworkers in the field of youth bill. Um, youth bill students have earned, well, we have 14 out of 32 high school diplomas that they have to August to get to 32 out of 32. And so they're moving pretty good, they're getting along pretty, uh, pretty well. And then, um, 32 out of 32 have earned a minimum of one NTCER module. And so, um, education is going well with youth bill. And I think we've got, um, I think we have those numbers might not update, but I think Andre texted some other numbers last night about updates on graduates. And so we might have a couple more than we think. Uh, so youth bill members also earned their first aid and CPR certification. And they went through, um, Flagler, no, they went through, uh, was it OSHA or Flaggers certificate?
Both.
Okay, OSHA and Flaggers, uh, certificates. Next slide. Uh, youth bill had Construction Week, uh, and this week was also Construction Week. So last month, they built these buddy benches that are all in the circle drive out here. And then actually this week, they just finished up today, the picnic benches, benches. So as you leave, please take a look at the work that they've done out there. They put, um, a lot of hard work into them and they had a lot of fun doing it. So it was really nice to see the outcome of it. Uh, the picnic benches and the, um, the picnic benches and the buddy benches will, will likely take over to the senior buildings once they're painted and furnished. So seniors can use those. And then for Women's History Month last month, we celebrated by getting all of our, our youth bill girls together. And, um, we all read and promoted the book, The House That She Built. It's a book about women in the trades. And so, um, just wanted to share that picture. And that's all I have.
Good job.
There we go.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
As usual, I wanted to mention the, uh, disbursements for, uh, March. We were up to 454,500, which is actually down from February. That was 693,686. One thing that I wanted to mention is that, uh, we have several bank accounts now that are actually moving. Uh, when I say moving, I mean, uh, that they're, they're being used to, to write checks to keep a little more organized of all money. We, we have Oakfield New to ensure grief with their own operated accounts as well now. As far as the most important, uh, disbursements for, for the month of March, we, we paid $20,000 to First Followers, which are the ones who, uh, are doing the project at 1409 Mountain Street. And that money was actually, uh, uh, paid out of the youth group 2019 grant. So that was, that was actually, uh, provisioned at the end of last year.
It was a project that youth bill worked on in partnership with First Followers. And this, uh, the house is on our, on our first grant.
Yes, and, and, uh, like I said, it was provisioned. Right now, we're actually, uh, paying that, that, uh, the actual, the actual bill. Bedrock also, uh, 15,265. Basically, the way, the way I see this, uh, we would have to be having an office in all of these out of county developments. But, uh, Bedrock is doing that service for us. So that's why we have to, we have to, uh, uh, pay them according to our agreement with them. There was also $40,000 paid to their creations. Uh, spelled creations with an S. And this is for the project of Five Oats and Miss Spirit Lee. Uh, aside from those $40,000, there's been another $1,800 paid for this project. Also, uh, there were $77,800 paid for the illumination project on Oakwood Trace that was mentioned a few minutes ago. I wanted to mention that, uh, this was the $300,000 loan that was, uh, agreed to, to, to Oakwood Trace for the, for the illumination project. So far, we have, uh, written $127,000 of, of, of that money. So like I, I mentioned in, in the previous meeting, uh, I'm actually transferring the money as, as the money is being needed to Oakwood Trace so that Trace could make these, these persons. Uh, and finally, there was a payment to Squareway Construction, uh, for $42,000. And that is, that is a payment for, uh, for tuition, for the, for training for the youth group participants. And actually, that money was split in, uh, several ways by, for, to be covered by the Department of Labor grant, uh, the Union Non-Youthful Coalition grant, uh, signature base. That's kind of a split, so. It was interesting. But, uh, so that was another dispersal. Uh, I, looking at the, at the actual versus budget as of, uh, March 2023, uh, I'm going to mention that we are, uh, on the income, we are about, uh, close to 9% down from, from our initial budget. I, uh, I'm confident that we should be getting some more funding from, from CHAD uh, as we have made some changes on our, on our reporting on the PMS. The way we were, uh, interpreting the, the amounts that, that are actually, uh, that are actually detailed on those, uh, reports for, for reimbursement. On the, that's on the income part. And on the cost part, we are actually very close there. There's just a 0.6% deviation. So that's, that's regarding the total company, uh, real versus budget. On, on those, uh, uh, real versus budget, uh, sheets, I was looking at the, at the blended components and the discrete components. And that's actually, uh, what I wanted to show in those graphs that are, that are showing there. Uh, I looked at the blended components and basically, speaking of, of their, of their rent, uh, the blended components are, are pretty much, uh, on track with what we've been budgeted. The discrete components are a little bit high, like 14.1%. And I actually, uh, wanted to show a breakdown with those graphs that are, that are shown there of the different properties. Uh, what was the actual and what was the budgeted amount for the, for the rent revenue? And as you can see on that first graph, which is the one for the blended component, uh, Oakwood Trace is pretty much, uh, on track. Haven is slightly under what was budgeted. Uh, but I would say that as far as the, as the blended components, virtually no, not very many deviations. Actually, we're ahead on some of the smaller, uh, properties such as, uh, pine wood and, and maple grove matter. With respect to the, uh, uh, discrete components, which is the next slide, please. And in, in this one, I kind of wanted to, to see more, uh, more in detail why we were behind on, on our budget. And basically, it's those new properties, uh, at the end, which are Newton and, and Sugar Creek that actually still have to pick up. We, uh, I, I, uh, I heard mentioned about the additional vouchers for Sugar Creek. So hopefully that's, that's also going to help get those, uh, get those filled. But I would say that's kind of the explanation of the, with the, uh, discrete components. I just wanted to show, uh, visually the, the comparison of their actual versus budget on those, on the property. Were there any questions?
Just one question.
Sure.
When we talked about, we paid $20,000 to First Followers for the property.
Uh-huh.
When Lily said we partnership with them, correct? So everybody that we partnership with, did we follow up and making sure they're doing their? So, everybody that we partnership with, did we follow up and making sure they're doing their part at the bargaining? Because a lot of times, you know, people get the money and they don't do what they're supposed to. I just wanna know, we doing?
They follow us by the materials and, uh, for Youthville and Youthville, they need some training for Youthville. So, First Followers, training at Youthville, you know, you purchase the files and materials for it.
Just wanna make sure that people...
They follow their receipts and, and documents.
Okay, I'll tell you on top of that, truly, uh, thank God we have you.
And I, I would, I would mention that there's some added value there, uh, which is the training that, uh, that the students get to. Okay. From those programs.
Alright.
And then, uh, again, when we touch on, you know, before we get over there about these two properties, Newton and Sugar Creek. So, they're economy properties. And so, you know, right now, they, they've opened recently and leasing is moving a little slower, which is why the budget is reflected like this. And so, we're gonna attach these vouchers to these, to the property to hopefully, uh, get more people these stuff. Cause what we're buying is that the rents are on the higher side. And so, I provide the DVDs there, we're able to get more people these stuff. And then I just wanna say too, when we were at the State Conference Association of Realtors, someone came up to me after the presentation and they were like, "Wow, you guys have a lot of programs, you got a lot going on. You must have a really good finance director." So, all those different streams of funding, how to keep up.
I like to say that it keeps me thinking, right? It's a career that's wholesale. Are there any other questions for, uh, hearing on, on the entertaining motion for approval of the financial reports?
So...
Probably move to Secretary Rokoff, please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Obuchowski? Commissioner McFarlane?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Anker?
Yes.
Okay, uh, are there any public cameras on that?
I, I have a comment. I just need to say, I want to let the board know that this is Dina's last board meeting with us here.
What?
She's looking into a position and she's done a fine job. We're gonna miss her, but we'll still go shopping and parking bins like every Saturday.
About the, uh, basketball tournament.
Oh, yes.
Alright, I wanted to, uh, just let the board know, let, um, HICC know that Youthville, um, have been challenged to a, uh, builders, what is it, uh?
Builders to builder basketball competition.
Yes, in Rockford, Illinois. And it will be on the eleventh of May. And so, I have been assigned as basketball coach. And you will go up, uh, what, what we're doing now is pretty, you know, working with budget to, um, uh, Saban and Jori putting that together. And I, I do believe they will be reaching out to some of you all for some, uh, donations as this is not a budgeted thing, but we've been challenged. And go, so we're gonna try and put together this trip, uh, with basketballs and cones and, and we have some jerseys and all of those things and, but, and we're working on practice facility and all that. But just wanna let you all know that Youthville, and we're gonna leave this parking lot and we're gonna go up to Rockford and we're gonna try and bring back the iron. Now, and what, I believe what they, they were saying to us is that whoever wins the tournament is gonna have to host the tournament next year. So, I don't know how that's gonna look, but we're going up in expectation to try and bring back the iron. Alright, so just root us all and see the progress.
I went, I went in there some office today and he had just my basketball court being built out.
Well, Coach, I know that you will be successful. I know you've got your game plan together. And, uh, but also I would like to, to, uh, say a couple of comments about Ms. Dana. She is, she, she's gonna be hurt later in the place, but, uh, you know, she's done an extremely marvelous job in the time she's been here. And I think everybody feels the same way I do. We're, we're losing a great person, but she's moving on to another greater opportunity. And, uh, we wish you all the best.
Thank you.
You may tremendous, trust me.
You're making me cry.
The transfer portal is open, maybe get some ringers to bring with you. If you turn off the velocity, come away from walking in seven footers, they're like, "Oh."
Well, I would just give you a statement, Dana.
We're gonna miss you all.
Yes.
We do have a closed session, so...
Nine B. Nine B.
Nine and B, so...
So, we need a motion to go on a closed session to discuss probable imminent litigation.
So, Luke?
Second.
Rokoff?
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Obuchowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarlane?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Anker?
Yes.
And that'll be followed by adjournment. There's no action that'll be taken, so we'll just adjourn after that, so.